Okay, at this point in time, we will call to order our regular meeting from March 3rd, 2020 of Harrison County Board of Education. We already have stand and said the pledge, so we will move on to our feature special recognitions and presentations. Tonight, we have Lincoln Middle School Boys Basketball, the county champions here with us this evening. Congratulations. And we have certificates for you. So Doc, if you would like.
I will, but before we do that, I want, wait a minute.
Want to read this?
I do. All right, yeah, that's what I want. That's what I want. All right, guys, so.
Oh, this is happening.
You're here tonight for what?
Yes.
All right.
One good regular reading.
All right, Mr. President, before we do that, I want to read play by play. Brayden Edgell, where's Brayden Edgell? Stand up. No, no, here, 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 here. Brayden Edgell put back a missed shot with 1.5 seconds left, giving the Lincoln Wildcats a thrilling 34-33 victory over Bridgeport Braves in the Harrison County Middle School Boys Championship game at Lincoln High. Oh, so you guys played at your home?
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt, does it, huh? The basket completed a comeback from 10 points down for Lincoln. It was quite an exciting game. Lincoln Coach Steve McCannon said, "You've got to take your hat off to Bridgeport. They're a great basketball team. We put our game plan in place just to see what we could pull off. The boys executed to a T, and I'm just so proud of them." Nate Swiger, where are you at Nate? Stand up here, boy. Nate Swiger scored 11 for the Wildcats in Edgell and Ashton Pritt. Where are you at Ashton? Come here.
You gotta stretch that arm, Doc.
All right. Ashton Pritt added eight. The Braves billed 29-19 advantage on Zach Ayub's basket with 2:15 left. Where's Zach?
He plays for Bridgeport.
He plays for Bridgeport. Are he still at Bridgeport? He doesn't play for you guys? Well, I don't want to talk about it. Bridgeport led by 32-31 falling Edgell's free throw, then went back up by two, 33-31, as Ben Bifano made one of two at the line with 58.8. Lincoln closed within one with 45 seconds left to go on an Edgell free throw, and Bridgeport's inability to convert at the line proved costly. The initial shot at the end of the game was not what McCannon had envisioned. Where's Coach at? Come here, Coach. Why don't you tell me what you envisioned, Coach?
Something a little less stressful.
Wait a minute, he had a full head of hair before.
Not a fadeaway 28 footer, but we'll take it. "We wanted a second attempt at the rim and obviously, and we were lucky enough to get a fortunate bounce," McCannon said. So with that said, I am incredibly honored, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of Education, Mr. President, if you'll come down here and join me on recognizing the Lincoln Middle School Wildcats who have outstanding. See, what was your regular season record?
14 and 5.
14 and 5?
13 and 5.
13 and 5?
13 and 5, JB. 12 and 5 regular season.
How'd you guys, how'd you do against Bridgeport in the regular season?
Oh.
I think we should talk about that.
No, we do need to talk about it.
How did it get you twice?
Oh.
No sign.
They got luck. They got luck.
But they didn't get it where it counts, right? Yeah.
But you know where it counts? That's right, Mr. President. Where it counts?
During the championship.
Yes, you guys are winners. You're the winners of all of Harrison County. And that's why we come here tonight, to recognize your outstanding achievement in being named, and not only being named, but actually winning. And as I tell everybody who ever comes to these meetings, that you go back someday, and you look back at the minutes, because we keep the minutes of every Board of Education meeting. So you could go and tell your grandchildren, every one of you, that I was on the championship team in 2020 for the middle school championship of Paulville, Harrison County. If you don't believe me, my name is in the record. That'll be 50 years from now. So if you guys look like me 50 years, you'll be able to say, not only did we win, but I hit the rim last. I did one time. I was five years old when I hit the rim. So with that said, Mr. President.
You have certificates right here.
Now, here's what they say. The Harrison County Board of Education's achievement honors Brayden Edgell. A Lincoln Middle School basketball champion. The Harrison County Basketball Championship as part of a team is presented on this 3rd day of March 2020, and by Harrison County Board of Education and its superintendent, Dr. Mark Manish. So it's a great deal of pleasure. Tell me, leading up to that play, Brayden, exactly what you did that was so brilliant that put you in such a position, that you were able to, did the ball go over the rim?
It went over.
Was it an air ball?
Yeah.
Who shot it? Is that, wait a minute, that was part of, that's what you're playing? Let's get it over here? Ah, important.
It was a pass.
I was just looking at him like, Nate, what are you doing, bud?
Okay, right down to you. You put it back out? After backboard? At the buzzer?
No, he didn't.
Give me this. All right. All right, Brayden. So, and I want everybody, we're going to give everybody one real quick. I'm going to go, we'll read everyone.
Read everyone.
Come here, Brayden, stand right here. Nate Swiger. All right. We'll get a picture here. David Burnett. Get up here, Brock.
It's birthday.
It's birthday.
You're welcome.
Your birthday, Brock. How old are you? 34, 20, 21?
Oh, 30? How old are you? What one are you saying?
I just was thinking.
We need to sing happy birthday.
Yeah.
All right, all right, all right.
Ready?
Sure, touch screen.
One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Brock. Happy birthday to you.
All right, Brock. Got it. We got the end of the day for happy birthday coming to Harrison County Board of Education.
Maybe the dinner happens.
Yeah, maybe the dinner happens. Noah Sears. Get up here, Brock. Dylan Shaw. Get up here, Dylan. Ethan Singleton. Get up here, Ethan. Kayden Carter. Get up here, Wyatt. Aiden Rice. Get up here, Aiden. Get up here, Damien. Get up here, Cade. Get up here, Landen. Now, I'm going to give Coach McCannon here a certificate. Before I do that, I want somebody to give me your best impression of Coach.
What's the trash can? Wait, what's the trash can?
Nate, get here, you know what?
He's the smartest kid. Make him shit.
We're the baseline.
Six sidelines.
We don't have the baseline.
Six sidelines.
Six sidelines.
Oh, did I miss it?
No, 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 Max is the team manager. And we're going to give him the Lincoln Middle School Boys Basketball Team right here. We have a certificate right here.
Can't we do that? Harrison County Board of Education honors senior McCannon Head Coach. Winning the Harrison County Middle School Basketball championship. Congratulations, Coach.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Do we have? There he is. That is ASHTO. ASHTO. Yeah.
P R I T.
Yeah. Take a long span. Yep. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I want you to get a drink here. All of Harrison County Middle School, the Lincoln Wildcats. Coach, you want to say anything? Coach says he wants to say, he loves to make speeches, he told us.
Just, we're proud of them for all their efforts, and we appreciate the board for having us here, and appreciate our administration for all their support through the school year, so.
What was your best halftime? What'd you, give me your speech at halftime.
Well, I don't know if I'm allowed to do that. There might have been some rules, but. They're easily motivated. They work hard.
Solid group of guys. Hopefully, I'll be able to see you as you were prepared.
Next year, I'll see you.
See you next year. I'll see you.
All right. Well, Sid. I'm going to talk to him. See if we're headed here. So, okay, everybody, congratulations. I'll picture the website tomorrow. Come on, Coach. Everybody, you might have to. The big guy in here. All right, everyone.
Then basically, you can see us. Like, if you can't see us, you can do that.
The big guy in here. Dad? Know where everyone's one?
Right here.
All right, no, it's always. All right, everybody, congratulations.
I missed two of them. All right. Continuing on. This brings us down to our next order of business. Are there any delegations? No delegations, all right? This brings us down to the superintendent's update.
Mr. President, we have a couple of things that we'd like to recognize.
If you want to give it a couple of seconds, maybe one or two minutes.
You have lumber report, it was lumber.
Yeah.
Then it became lumber report.
Because I did my stream teaching there.
Personnel. Well, I'll explain when we get back there. I don't want to say it with the mic on. Personnel, actually, one of them is his. I don't believe so.
You can make a motion to go to executive session, ain't it? You don't have to wait till personnel.
Okay. Well, I mean, there's only so many motions you can make for executive session. There's three different types of motions, so. Well, if there's, if there's no, I guess if there's no objection, would you like to move the personnel? If there's no objection in moving the personnel up, Mr. Messenger has asked if there would be objection from the rest of the board members to move personnel up into the next item before superintendent's update?
I've got no objection.
She, I guess she wants to talk about personnel. Okay, if there's no objections, then we'll accept a motion for personnel.
Make your legal motion.
I move pursuant to 690-4 of the West Virginia Code that the board goes to executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters which if discussed in public, might affect adversely the reputation of any person.
Mr. Messenger has made a motion for personnel to go into executive session. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're moving into executive session briefly. Mr. Messenger has seconded the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We are now back in regular session. All right. So the agreement of the board to move the personnel agenda up to the next item for business, is there a motion to approve the personnel agenda as presented by the superintendent?
Mr. President, I make a motion we approve the personnel agenda and personnel matters as presented by the superintendent.
Mr. Hammer has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
The two new positions, I just wanted to ask about, that's part of the personnel. The second one more, I'm getting used to my new computer, wait a second here. Where is it? Down. I needed a touchscreen. I'm not used to the button.
You got your new computers tonight, didn't you?
Are you referring to the alternative elementary school coordinator?
Wait, it was in, I can't get, yeah, what exactly is that? An extracurricular assignment?
This, the alternative elementary school coordination?
Yes.
Bringing back the contract for the back to basics that we were talking about earlier, changing the hours.
We discussed it last time, remember, and the hours were?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I do have a few questions on that. Do we not have personnel there? Why are we, you're talking about the two hours after?
This is the, we have a person now that's going over four hours, working in the afternoon because she's aborting, she's aborting duty, oh, she's a half-time employee.
Okay.
She's working, there's currently two teachers there all the time.
And there's eight students.
They stay, they stay the whole time that the students are there. She's working kind of as an administrator there and working with the program, with the two teachers that are currently there. Hours, extra hours.
So basically, for eight students, we have about four employees. We have Victor, we have this now, and we have two teachers for eight students.
Yeah, we hired two full-time teachers there, and the rest are.
And this is an extracurricular for $35 an hour. Why are the teachers, why, and, correct me, that is, you're the fourth person, correct? Since you're here, may I ask him?
Yeah.
To join in on the conversation here?
There's no jack.
Why are, why is, why do we need four people for eight students? That's my question.
Well, we probably don't moving forward, however, those, the social worker and the counselor just recently came on, so prior to them, this individual was doing a lot of the coordination, the tools, and back to basics, and with the parents, and setting up meetings, and bringing kids over, returning kids, supporting kids, and they go back, and a lot of that type of footwork. And as we get this, these counselors and social workers up to speed, our plan is to cut that out. But for the first half a year, we didn't have that. They just came on, I don't know the dates off the top of my head, but they just came on basically the second semester, so that's what this was for.
So is this job only until the end of the year?
It's only approved until the end of the year. Yeah, I would have next year.
Then at that time, it'd be reevaluated.
I have next year, those two people could carry on those duties themselves without the support of the person that we've been using.
There is a transitional period, and which I agree, that's what, Dr. Fisher and I have spoke about that, there is a transitional period. This is still relatively new program, but per his discussion right here, the chances of us needing that, and your question that you asked, I have got eight kids, but that's the, you can't exceed the eight. You can go to nine perhaps.
Yeah, it's, it's not so much, it's not the one.
I'm sorry, I just can't see that, and I'm not going to vote for this, especially at $35 an hour. I don't see, I look at our whole entire county, and I'm not discounting those eight children, okay? Because we have plenty, plenty of people within our system. But to have four teachers for eight students, I just can't, representing this county, think that's right, and I won't, because.
I don't think it's four teachers, I think it's two teachers and this.
Four employees.
This additional alternative elementary school coordinator.
It's, it's half, well, the counselor is half-time, shared with Wilsonburg, the social worker is half-time, shared with the rest of United.
And two full-time teachers.
Two full-time teachers.
And half-time, what he just said, and half-time, the other thing he just said, and, and him. So actually, we're now two, two, six people, if we include this, right? You, the two half-times, the two full-time.
You got two half-times, and you got two full-times.
Yes.
Okay. And then, but then after the first.
And him. He's the, you coordinate, that makes your program, right?
Well, he oversees the program, but he's not in the school. He's not over there with the students.
He's in regard.
I'm just saying, it just doesn't, I don't see any sense in that.
This is a unique kid, and Chris, if I may, this is a unique student who has myriad of issues, and that's why we created this, this board has created, this is what is called a tier three. These kids are acting out and simply, we have to get them out of the classroom. We've got to intervene, we've got to, we've got to transition them back into the school. And, and your point.
I'm not against any of that. I am against those six employees.
But he made the point there, and the point was that, okay, I'll tell you what, through this transition to the end of the year, my chances of you seeing this anymore after this, because I agree with you. I said, that's it. So that's, that's, but they made the case that this would help this transitional period in addressing these kids' needs.
So next year, we won't have the same eight, or is, we believe they have the same eight, or?
Well, we would have to renew it if this board desires to do it, but then I would, and I would also have to recommend it. I, it's not my intent to recommend it after, after this year is completed. This is the first year of the back to basics program, which we had such an outcry, in fact, they were here, many teachers were here. We have some really, really kids that are really acting out. These are the, and I hesitate to use the worst of the worst, but these are very difficult students who simply cannot.
They're just rock game regulars.
Oh, and so, we have the back to the basic program, we do have additional support services, and through this transitional period going from a brand-new program, and part of our goal, in the sense of this program, is that it's a successful transition back to the school. It's not our intent to keep them there. In fact, these social workers will probably, in many instances, follow that child back to that school and work with that child, not only at that school, but when they're transitioned back to their homeschool.
And work with the parents and collaborate with their outside.
Work with the parents. This is more than your traditional, but, and, I could see.
You're right, it's very labor-intensive, absolutely.
And I understand, and, and as far as this is concerned, I'll vote for it, because it's only until the end of the year, it's about $3,000 from, I mean, to finish out the school year, and then we'll address it after that.
Thirty hours per month.
I know, we've pledged, we've pledged a lot of support to the back to basics program as being an important program that we all felt strongly about.
Oh, I feel 100% strongly for it, Frank.
Yeah.
I am simply saying, six employees for eight kids, I would like to see six employees for all our high academic students in the county, and someone, six employees putting out scholarships at every university, where they get the best benefit.
It's not six.
You have a half-time, two half-times.
All right, two half-times make a whole.
You have two full-time teachers.
Okay, that's, that's three.
You have this person and him overseeing the program.
Well, and so we add the one, I come up with four, and I missed a lot of days of math, you know?
Two full-time.
Two full-times.
It's three and a half.
Two and a half.
How many hours?
Because she's half-time, she's been half-time.
How many hours?
On the particular position. Right, so two halves make a whole.
Yeah.
As one position.
And then two teachers.
So do we have a bus?
And then this time is a half. This is a half position.
Okay, so it's three and a half.
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
It's stacked today.
Okay, so it's stacked, so we have a bus, but our teachers are there until 4:30, correct?
Their day is nine to five.
Nine to five?
Yeah.
So when they leave, because I had heard, you know, some of this was, you know, because everyone was gone, and there were students that still were being picked up.
Yeah.
But, and you know I heard that, and so simply, you're saying there are two teachers there, correct?
Yeah, just the two teachers, and after 3 o'clock, the building's empty, except maybe a custodian, there's two teachers and they hit. So we'd like to try to keep a third person there as much as we can.
Why? Because there.
Case there's a problem.
You know, once again, I want to say, I am 100%.
These types of students are assaulting teachers, and these are the types of students that are at that level.
These are elementary, right? Elementary students.
That are assaulting, I mean, that's the level of student that you're dealing with.
Some of them are very aggressive, and that seems strange out of elementary, but these things.
Listen, I am 100% for the program. I'm not disputing that, and we have back this program and all that. I, I just, I just, I, that's a lot of money, you know, that we keep putting in just eight kids.
Dr. Manish has the same concern, he's expressed that concern many times.
And he just expressed that.
We need, we need it, but we need to be efficient, we need to be cost-effective, and I know that's a concern for him to, he's said that to me many times.
There's what is called economies of scale, and I've used that term with him many times. And I, your point's well taken, I said the same thing. And Daryl and, and Vic, both have come to me, said, we've just got to get this thing off, it's got to be successful, that transitional period where they go back to school is where the success is. And, and these people, and the way they explained it to me, that these people would follow that child back, would also be able to work with that child, be able to work with the parents, work with the administration to assure that smooth transition, which I thought is critical. What good is when you do all this, when this board has been successfully provide all the funds, and then turn around and send a kid back, and he's just as bad as he was when he left? That's, then that's a figure, and I, you know what I told them? If that, if that becomes the case, then this program goes away, and they know that.
So why don't we just pull the job description out of the regular personnel agenda and take a vote separately on it?
Well, wait a second, I have one more question. This is extracurricular, that was one of my other concerns, at $35 an hour. That concerns me when other extracurricular jobs come up where we have a set pay scale, that this is going to be a set precedence for that. Why was this not posted as a position then? Is my question, instead of extracurricular. I don't understand why this is extracurricular, I guess. Like, it comes.
It's not a full-time position, is it?
No, it's just.
Yeah.
Part after the regular school day, although it's also during the regular school day, but part is after the regular school day. I discussed that with Dr. Manish, I mean, there's probably not a perfect clean way to do this, so we thought extracurricular is probably the best terminology for it.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, this is just a job description, this doesn't hire anyone in this position.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, this is just a job description, this doesn't hire anyone in this position, it still has to be posted.
Okay.
I mean.
Well, that, okay.
Yeah, and my other, yeah, my other question too, Amanda Hare, uh, special education curriculum coordinator, is that replacing someone, or?
Amanda Bailey.
Oh, okay. So Amanda, so you don't have to change.
Is she already within your office, or?
No, that's probably outside, so generally.
I know, but I mean, she's somewhere else coming into this position.
Lincoln High School.
She's Lincoln High School coming into this position, okay.
So if, if, if you would like to pull the job description off, Mrs. Messenger, we can pull the job description off.
Yeah, I also have, I have to recuse myself, and I cannot get my stuff up.
Well, I, I will, uh, uh, I guess just to make it easier, I will amend my motion to be, uh, that I make a motion, we accept the personnel agenda with the exception of, uh, the job description, which we'll vote on separately. All right, a motion has been made to amend Mr. Hamrick's original motion to accept the personnel agenda with the first job description leading the second job description off of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoag, you seconded the motion, is there any discussion?
I, I have to recuse myself, I said, you could see that, just in volunteers.
Uh, I think it was Greg.
Yeah, Greg Noon.
Okay, Ms. Messenger must recuse herself from Greg Noon. Is, uh, is there any further discussion, so stipulated, is there any further discussion? They're stipulated.
It was on page eight.
No.
No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, this brings us to the next job description, um, is there a motion to accept job description two? The extracurricular contract for alternative elementary school coordinator. So moved. Mr. Hamrick has made the motion to, uh, to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dory has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. This brings us down to superintendent's update.
Got a couple things, Mr. President, uh, uh, under curriculum and, and technology, uh, last year, we did, and I wanna draw your attention, United Way Emerging Leaders presents Hire and Fire. Uh, and this gives you some insight as to, uh, how we're hiring and firing, and, and Donna, you wanna, you wanna discuss that, uh, over, over at, uh?
Yes. Yeah, this is the second year, um, that we have had this project with United Way and Emerging Leaders, uh, leaders here at the Academy. Uh, what they do at the Caperton Center is they set up interview sessions, um, for high school, uh, juniors and seniors. Um, and so we have, uh, the businesses listed there on the flyer that are participating, they will send representatives from their business, um, that do real-life interviews with these students. The students have to bring a cover letter, a resume, and enter, uh, real-life interview questions. And then they take it a step further, and they give them feedback on their interview skills, their dress, their tomeliness, um, students have to schedule interview slots, um, and they have to pick areas that they are interested in pursuing. Um, Doctor Manchin went down, uh, last year and observed several of these interviews, um, as well as had lunch with some of the students that participated and got feedback, um, from those students. And so this is the second year for it, bigger and better, um, they actually, uh, have been to several of our high schools to speak with, um, the student body at large, um, to generate interest in the event. Um, last year, they just did ten, um, to fifteen students per high school, um, this year, they're hoping to expand that, um, and they've increased, um, the businesses participating. So, um, they're doing a, a prep day on March thirteenth, and then they're doing, um, the actual hire or fire event is on March, um, twentieth, so it's an exciting opportunity for our students.
I really like the, uh, the idea of this, my, my hope would be, this is great for the people that can get to the Caperton Center.
Yes.
But there's students whose parents are not involved in their life, who don't have opportunities to go out to the Caperton Center.
Yeah.
Is there anything we can do like this?
We did take care of that, um, and made some arrangements last year to meet those students' needs.
Okay.
Yeah, um, we took care of that at the school level, um, United Way took care of some of that, so we made sure that everybody who wanted to get there last year could get there.
Okay.
And get that feedback, so, yeah, that's always in our mind.
All right.
Yeah.
Which I think's neat, uh, I, I like Donna said, Donna and I both went over and had the opportunity to sit down and have lunch with them and, and talk to them, and, and I think that is such a real, a great, real world. But it was interesting, the lawyer who, uh, uh, talked to some of our students.
Yeah.
Then filed suit against us next day.
That is true.
Is that true? Very sweet of him.
We're all friends.
We're all friends now.
It's business.
It's just business.
He's not on this list this year.
What's that, what's Deloitte?
Um, they are not on that list this year, I don't believe.
What is Deloitte, D-E-L-O-I-T-T-E?
I believe it's an accounting firm.
Deloitte, Deloitte Touche.
Okay.
I think maybe it's Touche.
And they use the Caperton Center because they have the smaller offices, so it can literally be set up at a desk with the applicant in front of them, um, as real-world as they possibly can get it.
Donna, can you, uh, and, and one of the things I think we're sending out, bring this to everybody's attention, Math for Life, and, uh.
Yes.
The new things we're doing.
Yes, it's, uh, March Math Madness, well, well, remember, we kicked this off last year as well. Um, these place mats were actually, um, sponsored by Pratt and Whitney and Thrasher. Um, we will be, um, doing copies of these, um, through that, uh, sponsor endorsement, and we will be putting them in restaurants throughout the community. So when parents sit down with their children, um, they can keep math ever-present in the mind, and you, of course, will look on the back, there is a basketball court, um, along with the theme of March Madness. So, um, just reminding people of the real-world application of math and its importance, and starting those conversations with, um, parents and students.
And I would say, Donna, and, and, Donna and I often cheer each other about academics and how sport they are, and how, some, we actually talk about it, but how we also agree, and I think this board all agrees, that's everything, everything that we do is in relation to. Uh, and I, I'm, I'm pleased to say that we're making some real strides in improving test scores in math, which has been, have been lacking over the years, and I, I feel comfortable, Donna has assured me, we'll make dramatic changes this year, is that correct, Donna?
We've got some great support in place.
I want to directly reflect that.
So are we going to continue without ready?
Um, we will hopefully bring a proposal to you in the next, um, couple of weeks, and you all to consider that. Um, we are getting positive data from it, we were just talking to our principals about that, um, getting positive feedback from, um, teachers as well as principals, um, and I would love to share that data with you all.
I would love to see that better.
Donna would love to share that.
Is that on the next board meeting, or is that on the next, this second board meeting?
How about April seventh?
April seventh.
April.
Okay.
Mr. President, I do have, uh, one last thing that, uh, that, uh, we've been working on, and I draw your attention, pandemic influenza plain Harrison County schools, and I know, Mr. President, that's something you feel strongly about, and, uh, and, and you certainly can review that, uh, Dr. Higgin has been working on that, it's, it's a draft that, uh.
Doctor Nelson is reviewing?
Kelly Nelson, and we've been reviewing this as our plan for Harrison County, and, uh, let the media reflect that, we do have a plan, should, uh, we have an outbreak, uh, across the board, we feel comfortable, and it's been reviewed by, uh, Dr. Nelson and, and, uh, health professionals. Uh, should we have the need to incorporate it, we're ready to go, Donna, you want, you wanna mention anything?
Wash your hands.
Yeah, wash your hands.
So do we have, um, for instance, if there would be a necessity to close school if it got that bad?
Yes.
Would there be a, a learning packet that we could send home with the children?
Yes, and, and of course, as you all know, we're well set up for that, um, because of the ice pack days, and we've seen how those work, um, system-wide, um, not just six through twelve, it works very well.
Yeah, we have mine already in place.
Um, so we've actually had a trial run at, at being able to do that, um, some of that is delineated in here, um, um, some protocols that we would use, um, and who would, um, give that feedback to the superintendent and that recommendation that perhaps that needed to be considered.
Okay.
For his consideration, so.
Okay.
It's in draft form, Doctor Nelson is reviewing it, um, and the, um, Harrison County Health Department.
Um, before, uh, the, before we get to, get to that point, I mean, are we really amping up our cleaning to really make sure, I mean, is that something they're doing now, not waiting till, to actually run it now?
Yeah. I don't, Joe, do you wanna answer that?
We just stressed that in a recent continuing education session back in January, because we're in the blue season to take extra time, extra care, the cleaning surfaces, whatever, those types, restroom facilities, sinks, boss of handles, so on and so forth.
I want one of those big trucks they have in China.
And we do have our purchasing, yeah, yeah, we do have our purchasing director, in fact, today, uh, and our RISA superintendent, so I mean, there's a backpack or something, are you aware of, uh?
We did purchase some of those in the fall, actually, I've met with Jody's family quite frequently over the last few days, and we have stocked up on everything that we can stock up, from bleach to hand sanitizers, to wipes, anything that we can get in the hands of the schools, and, um, which we can set up training and all of that with some of our current vendors as well.
I, I think it's all well and good that we're doing this, I really do, but I also wanna make sure that we have protections in place for people who are cleaning the schools, I think.
We stress that also.
Good, thank you.
Wear gloves.
Good.
Hazmat suits.
Hands on a regular basis.
If they need hazmat suits, then maybe we could buy hazmat suits, I mean, I just, you know, you wanna protect them.
Pretty well break everybody out.
I know, right? Don't put that in the paper, Taylor, no, no, Board of Education calls for hazmat suits, no, we don't want that.
That'll pretty much get them all in.
Yeah, that'd be a bad thing, Todd, edit that off the video.
Is that what he just said, strike that?
All right. Thank you, is there anything else, Doctor Manchin?
No, Mr. President, that's all we have, then there was no, uh, UTC update.
Okay, all right, this brings us down to item B, mowing information, and this is something that is open for discussion, and a packet has been provided to us.
Hey, Joe, I want you to quiet out a bit, I think, I think, I think that the board has some questions.
No, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi.
If, if you're, if you wanna ask any questions?
Well, uh, mine was on like the pesticides and herbicides, and the, I happened to look the RFP that was sent out, of course, well, I'll start off by saying this. We, uh, the, these contracts were never in front of the board, and they were never approved in two thousand and eighteen, so therefore, um, I think they should be rebid. Um, but my biggest concern after looking at the RFP happens to be on the herbicides and pesticides, and it was explained to me that we are subcontracting that to just one of the companies we deal with. Although on the bid sheet that was given to me, they all say they are licensed, um. Do, are we getting, it says approved, are we getting EPA, uh, numbers, keeping them on file for the three years, I mean, have, what are approved?
We get a copy of their license when they submit their bid.
But.
For that.
Okay, but there was only one company that actually had their license.
Pretty much, yeah, they're doing it for everybody.
But on the bid, it said that all of the companies had it, and so should that even be a part of the mowing contract if they're subcontracting out, should we just not have a? I mean, because I don't see the one lower, raising his prices and the other ones lowering their prices when their prices include that. Do you understand what I'm saying, like, according, according to the RFP, whoever has RCBs, school, let's say, their prices including herbicide, but yet a whole nother company is doing it. And that company isn't raising his prices and that one lowering it because they actually aren't performing the duty. I don't know, I'm just a little, um, I'm a little, I know, uh, that they are registered and they went to, but it's also required by the Department of Agriculture that every single person working under him has to be a register technician, and I only got the license of one person, and she showed me where three more just are getting theirs. In other words, I don't know, I say, I, I mean, are you, are they, what are the approved, uh, herbicides and pesticides we're putting on around our schools, are they giving those to you?
They're using a roundup product, what they're using, it's a roundup product.
Roundup?
Yeah, yeah, that's what they're using.
Oh, that sounds great.
Joe, let me ask you, if, 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 I have the contract for cutting the grass and everything, and doing all that, and the herbicide, and, you know, spraying and everything, as a company, I'm having to pay the person to spraying the herbicides, not the, not the county. Because I, it's coming out of my contract.
When you bid.
When I bid.
You bid, you bid a per round, per mowing, and if you don't, if you don't have the certification to spray, or you don't have anybody working for you that has a certification, then if you have to hire that other person, then you're paying that person.
It, it's coming out of whatever your contract bid, okay.
That's how that works, yes, yes.
Well, my thing was the approved, like herbicides, cause it's underneath the bleachers, like when I read the, I mean, we could go into this because I, 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 I'm gonna, instead going into details, I think that's maybe something we should do later after we make a decision and discuss putting it out to bid that the board approves.
Right.
And there's been no revisions, uh, like I had discussed with Christine, where there's been, you know, we sold the RISA building and this, and, you know, Johnson Elementary took up ninety percent of what grass was there that they were mowing, and what else was left is now a parking lot.
Right.
And, um, so I'm just suggesting, or I, I think that we should rebid these, I know it's sort of late in the season, but, um, if Christine told me she's already worked up some of the paperwork, so that part of it's already done. But, um, can we do a, if, if the grass gets high in the meantime, cause I guess they're supposed to start, I didn't look at what she gave me.
Typically start April first.
Okay, let's say, uh, we don't get something approved by mid-April, uh, can these people work on a, a job, like, a week, week by week?
Well, I don't know if, I mean, uh.
I don't think they're gonna accept that.
I don't know whether they'll accept that or not, if they know we're bidding it out, I don't know whether the current contractor would accept it that way.
They plan, they just.
They'll take another.
Yeah.
They'll know they'll take another.
They'll be looking, I mean, they may bid again, but they may also be bidding on other mowing jobs also, I mean, that's the way I'm saying, I don't know how that would work, but, I mean, we could probably get it, uh, I mean, Christine's got some stuff together now, we could probably have an outbreak by the end of this week.
Yeah.
Okay, Christie, that, you have something to say?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that's all.
I'm just kinda wondering if we should have these people doing herbicides and pesticides, I guess, I mean.
Well, that's something that we put in the contract because of trimming and a lot of chain-link fence lines, and it's difficult to get all that cut out of there, and we had a lot of people complain, as they do about the mowing in general, that growing up in chain-link fence lines and just a way to eliminate that growth in areas like that, and if you've ever mowed at some of our athletic facilities and tried to mow underneath bleachers, it's almost impossible to get down underneath some of the lower rows sometimes.
We do have in our RFP that subcontracting this service is allowed under the herbicide and pesticide.
I saw that.
Yeah, and then as far as if the vendor in the interim while we are bidding this out, so we get to the point where the weather breaks and it's got fifty, sixty degree weather and the ground is dry, if the vendor is willing, eighty-two hundred, the purchasing policy does allow us to do a short-term agreement, but both parties would have to agree, the vendor would have to agree, but then we set the term of that, so we could say just for the remainder of March, or just for the month of April until we are satisfied with the outcome. So we do have that opportunity, but the vendor would have to be willing to do so. But like I mentioned, we've got this ready to go, if that's how you all vote, Joe and I can, uh, decide on a, uh, pre-bid meeting.
Pre-bid meeting.
Where they come and meet with us, we go over the RFP, and then they have to do site visits with Joe, if they don't come to the pre-bid meeting, we don't allow them to bid, because that's where they learn about that property and learn the specifics of what we require on those properties.
Well, you do drive them around to Bayham, or?
Yeah, well, usually we just, we have a pre-bid meeting here, and then we pick a day, if they wanna go with me to see all the sites, then we'll walk through all the sites.
So can you give me an estimation on how long it would take to go through a bidding process?
So since we already, um, got the RFP basically back together, we made the adjustments, took off the RISA building, and then also made some other changes to it, uh, Kristin had brought it up, wanting to make sure they have logos on them of what companies that they're with, and we've talked with Ken about that. Um, I could get this, as long as the paper is willing, we could get it in as early as Thursday, if not Friday, we could do the pre-bid meeting next week, and then we could require bids due the following week. We typically give up seven to ten days in between each, but knowing the timeline of events, and then whatever day the bids are due, we will score them, and as long as they've got all the information that we require, we could essentially award within fourteen days, twenty-one days max.
So well before the time they start mowing?
Yeah.
Or, or close to it.
Or close to it, yeah.
Their contracts run from when to when?
April first to November first.
Now, on the, uh, when I'm looking at, uh, these contracts, here, what is that, sixty-five dollars each, hundred fifty-five dollars each?
Yeah.
What, what is, what is, what, what are we getting for sixty-five dollars each, is that each person getting sixty-five dollars?
No, that's, that's the mowing per round at that location.
So, so why do we have it, like?
It's per round, so if they're three weeks in a month, four weeks in a month, that's the total that they billed us for that.
Right, and you're saying what they built for the month.
For the, for the month?
Right.
How many times are they going out there for, uh, the, I mean, I'm, I'm just curious.
Well, they're mowing, what you're saying is they're mowing Northview Elementary for sixty-five dollars every time they mow it.
Ri- right, and so in a month, if they, if it's only sixty-five dollars for just Northview, how did they get the two hundred and sixty, they're, uh, are they mowing, mowing each week, you're?
Yeah, you're, you're basically looking at four weeks there.
Okay, but I, we just had a lot of principals complaining about what their, their grasses were looking, looking at, so I, I mean, I think they're charging you two hundred and sixty, but I don't know, I mean, I think they're charging you for four weeks, but I don't know what, if the principals are, if, if. But I don't know what, if the principals are, if, if they're actually doing that or not. You know what I mean? Because we wouldn't have the complaints from, from the, the principals that we were getting. But the, uh, the, with some of these, I mean, these are, why are we-
They're there.
We're jumping up pretty high on some of these places. And a BOE property? Dear God, I mean, why so much for this property? I mean, there's, there's not much, but I don't know.
Which property?
BOE.
This property.
This property, it's, um, it, the bid is, it's in your pocket, because I broke it down, seventy-four ninety-nine for this property each time, um, that they do. But when they bill us, they bill us for the entire Clarksburg locale, so that's why, um, we would bid down. Yeah.
So that includes WI?
Which that has WI, Heightfield, RCB, Liberty, even-
Well, see, WI separately, that's, that, WI separate.
And size matter more.
So these, so like, so with this seventy-five, I'm just thinking, seventy-five dollars for this property, which, okay. And then, why in the world, four, almost four hundred bucks right there, I just-
Well, there's a large, a lot of trimming on this property, because remember our courtyard out there?
Right, but they're only charging seventy-four doll, or seventy-five dollars.
We've had to deal with the lot across the street too, since we acquired that, mowing it some too.
And Nutter Ford is not a part of the Clarksburg bid?
It is not, it is-
Nutter Ford and Norwood Elementary are together.
How much is it for Norwood?
I don't think-
He's got it right there.
I'm, I'm just curious, if we had, if we had a group, five guys that, that could also help out with maintenance, that's, I mean, we leased the equipment, if we drove around and they hopped out and worked on the area, I mean, would it, like, our cost? I can't imagine it costing us the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That, uh, I just think, I, it just seems like it's getting more and more and more each time, where I'm like, I don't-
We found on that spreadsheet, um, just to address that concern, is from the RFP in FY fifteen to the RFP in FY eighteen, we listed out each of the locales and what happened with those locales. So for instance, the Clark, Clarksburg actually went down a hundred and ten dollars and two cents per cut from the previous bid.
Why would you reference two thousand fifteen when you rebid this out in two thousand eighteen?
We're comparing eighteen with fifteen as to where the costs were, because we're in, we're still in the RFP from FY eighteen.
Okay, so-
So we went back to the previous one just to compare costs and where we were at in comparison. Because the costs aren't going up during the FY eighteen bid, it's a consistent price that ha, that, that-
Yeah, but that's a little difficult, because, I mean, in our, in two thousand fifteen, was there Lumberport Middle School?
I wasn't hearing two thousand fifteen.
See, that's what I mean, that doesn't really distinguish.
But we did go down two hundred and twenty-four thousand, down to a hundred and forty-six thousand.
Yeah, so there is some cost change.
So you're still down sixty thousand in one year.
I just think it's important to denote where we were at in one RFP versus where we're at today, just to, just to show that they all haven't gone up
You're, we're paying less than we did.
or they all haven't gone down, that's just kind of cost comparison.
And I, talking to some custodians, I mean, they, they said they mowed the grass before, uh, they were just, at their party, they got paid extra money to mow the grass. So then we were helping our custodians, and as they're watching over the property, and they know the property, and the principal can keep an eye on them, I mean, probably is that, that's something where we can save money and-
It's a possibility, it's a possibility, yeah.
Well, the estimate that she gave me came out to, uh, basically, three hundred, when they reviewed this, and I guess two thousand fifteen. There it is, it's, um, the cost comparison, it says, the first year's cost for equipment would be two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Subsequent, subsequent year equipment cost would be eighty-seven thousand. I just can't buy that. I mean, I looked at it, you know, if you got four mowers, ten thousand, that's forty thousand. You can lease them, I checked into that, for every ten thousand, it's about four hundred dollars on a two-year lease.
Well, we based that off purchasing, let loose.
But, uh, two hundred and, uh, forty thousand dollars to buy four mowers and tractor and, and-
And we used to run, we used to run six big mowers when we did it ourselves years ago.
That'd be sixty thousand.
If I may, I mean, if there's-
No, we ran, we ran, we ran a tractor with a fifteen-foot bat wing mower on it, was one of the machines we ran back then.
If there's a desire for the board to bid this out, then I, I, I think that we should make a motion to do so.
Okay.
Make a motion and we bid this out.
Okay, motion has been made to bid the contract, the mowing contract, out for the school's lawns. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Messenger has seconded the motion, is there any?
If, if I may, if you ask a question, uh-
Discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, we're good?
Discussion.
Uh, we're, we're about ready to, this will be the third year of this proposed, uh, contract. Now, if I understand it correctly, we continue and then bid it out, is, is that what this?
No, we discussed that when you were gone. They can have the bid documents in the paper for this week, we can be done by April.
Okay, is that, oh, okay, good.
Yeah, so we can be, we can, we can get there, be close, but we can get there.
Okay, good enough.
We went ahead and worked on it and got ahead of this, just in case that that was the outcome, so.
Okay, okay.
I was trying to just for information, she said it includes, what was that, the LS thirty that both companies, both us and the company, we could get out of it thirty days?
Oh, the agreement addendum, the WB ninety-six is what the state calls it, and actually, that's a required document on anything over five thousand dollars. The state does require that, that every local government agency or political subdivision have a thirty-day out clause for every contract that we enter into. So that's something that I've been really cognizant about, making sure each vendor signs, so we have thirty days out. So we're within, I could get, you know what I mean, we're a little late, but we can still enact it and just say, we've just opted to go ahead and rebid it, and here's where we're at.
And we're thirty days out from April first?
Pretty much, we're a couple of days late, but it's okay, as long as I get that notice out to them, I can, I can do it this evening, you know what I mean? And, and just say, if that's how the board goes, that this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna enact the WB ninety-six and our thirty-day out. Look in your email for, um, a date and time of our pre-bid meeting and go from there.
Okay.
And with that being said, since that is included, I think that, um, we should look, since this was so long ago, look back into how much it would cost us to hire, because we need other maintenance people anyway, but hire, we were looking at more maintenance people. Bringing it back in-house.
I, I would take that to, to, uh, different discussion, uh, there, because that's not included in this motion. If you would like to instruct Dr. Manchin to possibly put together some, uh, numbers, to, to relook at numbers bringing it in-house?
Okay, I was just saying that this, even if we do put it out to bid, just say, we all know that there is that thirty-day out.
Mm-hmm, sure. Is there, is there a, um, possibility that you could get with Joe and Christine?
Not right away, not right away, I, you're right, you have to separate. We have to bid it out, but I'm just saying, knowing that we're bidding this out, there's always a thirty-day document that she has with that, that, you know, spend some time and let's look at eventually bringing it back in-house.
The documents really protected us in some things. The only thing I would like to mention is, I believe, if the, even if we, you look into the in-housing of the mowing, I believe the brush hogging is still going to have to be probably bid out.
And just remember that if we did it in-house, I mean, we talked about a possible extra contract, but if you were hiring someone to do that, your fixed cost on each employee you hire is about seventy thousand for entry-level maintenance, because you're paying a worker's comp, you're paying-
Insurance.
Insurance and all that, so even if you hire entry-level maintenance workers, your fixed cost could be seventy. So you're at two, you know, you're two eighty there for four people, a crew of four, so. Without equipment.
When you talk about the equipment and you're leasing it, yeah, you can buy the ten thousand dollar machine, but is it versatile to do anything else with?
Then you gotta talk about depreciation and maintenance.
Right, and we were looking at equipment at that time that could be utilized for snow removal around some of the schools, as well as mowing also.
Well, I understand that, but the, the, I've seen the mowers cutting the grasses right now. And they are thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and they're just- No, they just cut grass though.
Just keep, just keep in mind, if you had a small crew, skeleton crew of four people,
Right.
you're still at two hundred and eighty thousand just in salary.
But aren't we hiring, uh, because I agreed with you previously that we do need more in our maintenance to keep our schools and our properties?
Oh, yeah, but, but if that's-
But, but if you're hiring them and they're just gonna be grass cutters, that's pretty high operating space.
You can't do that, I don't think, I don't think you could do that, Doug. Is what I was told, it would have to be a regular maintenance employee, and then you were-
Yeah, but you're just gonna have to hire more people.
You're primarily looking at, to just do that, you're looking at, at, at a general maintenance employee only, which that doesn't give them, uh, the knowledge or the know-how to do anything else, other than just cut grass. So, and that's what we got into before, that's how we got started contracting grass. Even when we had probably forty people in the maintenance department, we were utilizing, using people that could do other things to cut grass in order to keep the grass mowed, because we only had two or three general maintenance people on staff. Because then you're limited on what they can do.
Everything specialized, H-Mac and-
Right. Right.
Electric.
I think I understood that.
And by the time you get your-
I watched a little bit, but I think I understand what you're saying.
By the time you get your people to cut the grass, then it's time to cut the grass again.
Right.
And it's just a constant cycle, you know, if the weather's, you know, raining and what have you. At least with these people that we're contracting, that's their only job and, you know, they can-
Right, but they don't do any snow removals or anything, this is just grass cutting.
Right.
So we, we still have snow removal fees on top of all this, right?
We do all of our snow removal, except if we get a, a large snowstorm, then we hire out extra help cleanup. But we do all of our own snow removal.
Are all these people the, and another concern, like I told her about, like, having a uniform and identified, because I've driven by and seen people with tank tops, different people every time, do we not do a security check on these people? I mean, is that, don't you think that's something, I mean, they're right up against the windows and around our kids all the time. I just kind of feel that there should be a security check.
I thought our vendors did, yeah, they had to go through a security process.
They have to do her, uh-
We usually get the ID matches.
Drive free.
Drive free. Some of what we have to do is the-
So we don't do any background checks or anything like that, but they provide you that.
They're supposed to, yes, and sometimes it's hard to get it from them, you know, we have to say on them and say, hey, have you done this, you know?
Right.
Um, but so far, we've had significant responses with these four that we have right now, so.
Okay.
And we did have, like I mentioned to you all, we did have, the last time we bid this out, the most interest and feedback and most bids that we've had, um, in the past. I went back through the record, so that to me was positive, that it, it is keeping them competitive, because we're getting more responses, so.
Okay. Okay.
And we would anticipate even more responses this time, so.
Okay, a motion has been made, um, and seconded, and we have had discussion. A call for the question has been, um, asked by Mr. Hamrick, and so we will take a vote. Uh, is there, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Good job, Joe, thank you, thank you, Christine.
Thank you very much. Next item is consent items. Is there a motion to approve consent items as presented by the superintendent?
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to approve the consent items, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hamrick has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, uh, item A, architect selection for Lincoln High School, existing football fieldhouse renovations, and in addition to the field house. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of CEC for board approval?
So moved.
Mr. Doherty has made the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Bridgeport High School renovations.
Mr. President, I ask, I spoke with Dr. Manchin to, and ask him about this as an agenda adjustment. As you know, we, uh, we just approved the Lincoln High School, uh, field house renovations. Uh, the renovations at Bridgeport High School on the press box are similar in scope, similar in cost, size, nature. Uh, is that, and speaking with our, uh, uh, staff who interviewed the, uh, uh, architects for the Lincoln High, uh, project, it's my understanding that they would have, uh, I mean, it was close between them and Thrasher, and Thrasher, uh, uh, if we had it on, if we had, we had already, uh, were ready to move forward, they would recommend Thrasher for the Bridgeport High School renovation project, and my feeling is, at this time, they're gonna need someone to do preliminary markups and things of that nature, and if, if, uh, staff was planning on recommending Thrasher, then I would make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, uh, employ Thrasher Engineering for the Bridgeport High School renovation project and allow Mr. Demato to work with them, uh, going forward.
Okay, a motion has been made by Mr. Hamrick to hire Thrasher Engineering to the field house-
Thrasher Architecture.
Thrasher Architecture, excuse me, to do the, um, architectural work for Bridgeport High School's renovations. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion, is there any discussion?
Just, uh, one, uh, I, I'm, I'm in agreement, but does need, does Dr. Manchin have to, uh, make the motion? I mean, can we make a motion for a company to be-
I can, yeah, we can make a motion.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we were on the ground.
And I talked to staff, including Dr. Manchin, and that's who would have, that's, that's, which is why we put it on the agenda.
Right, I, I'm in agreement with it.
He asked that it be put on the agenda.
Okay.
Rather than waiting two weeks, they can, they can start the work now, so both projects can move forward.
I just didn't know if it had to come from Dr. Manchin saying, I make the motion to this.
Well, and that's, that's a good point, and in fact, the agenda, uh, adjustment, uh, was at my request.
The action.
Request from the board, the request from the board, but-
Yeah.
The action discussion is, is recommended action, is to accept the recommendation as presented by the superintendent.
And that is the superintendent, and, and I got ahead, he could have made that recommendation, we, we spoke on that and-
Oh, and then, that's fine, I just want to make sure, I'm in agreement with it.
So, so is it your intent, Dr. Manchin, to recommend Thrasher?
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
Then I'm, I'm an aye.
So that, that was proper to do that, but, but I just, uh, I mean, if that was gonna be the recommendation two weeks from now, they already, similar scope, they already interviewed them, then we might as well give Mr. Demato someone to work with now.
And Mr. President, I might add that, uh, that we are in getting close to where it's gonna require, uh, some help by design professionals. Baker's here tonight, we've had the opportunity to work together, and this is gonna be great, uh, getting Thrasher involved, uh, with us, through this whole project. We have another, uh, several other projects in the near future that, uh, we may, uh, need a little help on, so.
We would be glad to help in any way possible. We have full staff architects, engineers, and construction estimators. So anything moving forward that you need preliminary budgeting, design work done, we would be happy to help right here.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
All right.
Craig, I think I like the slip we hear when we said Thrasher Engineering. I just think it's important that everyone knows that you are an architecture firm and engineering, although Thrasher Engineering seems to come out a lot easier. But, uh, I don't think a lot of people realize that, and how many schools you have done and how many facilities, and, um, maybe next time you can bring us maybe a sheet of paper, just so, on your architecture firm part of, of Thrasher.
If anybody, and I will say this, if anybody has an opportunity to go to Dartridge County and look at the facility that they built at Dartridge County, you will be amazed.
Yes.
You will be, you will be utterly amazed. They did a phenomenal job with Dartridge County Stadium.
Mm-hmm. With all the money they got.
Easy to build.
Amazing what a couple million dollars do, right?
That's right. All right, a motion is on the table, um, we have had discussion, is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, this brings us to item C, professional service agreement with Mark Klingon, BCBA. Is there a motion to approve a contract with Mark Klingon, BCBA, for, from two eighteen twenty twenty and terminating six thirty twenty twenty as presented by the superintendent?
I'll move it for discussion purpose.
Mr. Hamrick has made the motion to accept, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion, is there discussion?
Yeah, what is BCBA and nowhere in here, uh, that's the only problem I have with it, I'm sure it's an easy explanation, but, uh, I hate when they use, uh, acronyms and, and don't explain the acronym anywhere in the document.
I didn't realize what it was.
No, it's nowhere in the document what the acronym is.
It is, it is, I found it, behavior, uh-
Okay, then I missed it.
Like the very first page, that I was looking to.
It's a behavior analyst, but it's BCBA, it's board certified.
Board certified behavior analyst.
Certified behavior analyst, yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
And, um, this is, I mean, he's someone not that works in our county, or?
No, he's actually a retired person who used to work for WBU Center for Excessive Disabilities. So, a couple of months ago, you approved a contract with another behavior analyst. He can only give us two days a week, because he's busy doing other stuff. So we found another guy, and he's willing to give us two days a week. And I think in the future, um, we probably need to consider hiring one of these guys full-time.
Full-time.
And we can probably do it with special ed money, uh, because that's kind of where the future of this is heading. Um, and we'd actually save money by hiring this guy full-time, because we'll pay these two guys for two days a week each. But, um, that's, that's where I see the field going, is because of increasing behaviors involved with a lot of students in our schools. Um, Canova County, I've told Dr. Manchin, Canova County, for example, has three of these people, full-time.
With, with all the, the drug babies that we have with behavior issues and, and IP's five oh four, I mean, they, uh, I don't, I don't know how two, three, ten would suffice for all the, all the, the needs that we have coming.
Yeah, I hope, I hope it plateaus soon, but, you know, it's.
Right, is the state helping us out with, I mean, because we're getting an influx, I mean, it is, I know they're back to basics and we've got those eight, there were special eight, but they're everywhere, it's not just.
The legislature did provide funding in the, what, wraparound services unless legislative, uh, and, and we did get several amount of money. And what benefited us was the fact that we had already, you, this Board of Education has already, uh, provided those services. So, when we got the money for those services, it was kind of like a windfall, so it really helped us out.
Don't say that so loud.
Well, I said kind of like a windfall, not an actual windfall.
She's taking pictures, she doesn't write.
She's got a, she's got a recorder on over there.
And back to what you say about, uh, it would behoove us to hire them full time rather, uh, a couple of reasons. If you can find one, you better go ahead and get one, because with, with every county needing, I mean, you know, I hire social workers and licensed professional counselors and I can't find them. Uh, so, they're, they're difficult to, to find licensed individuals in this field, so, uh, you're right.
Yeah, hopefully it's beneficial to us.
So, is that something, I mean, you know, I, I always seem to do it the wrong place, but is that something that we should say right now?
I just think that, I just think that.
I mean, let's look, I agree with you and I'm saying.
Well, I would just think that come, uh, personnel and, and budget time, which is right around the corner, that may be something that you can bring to us and say, you know, let's go ahead and do that.
Is there somebody out there, Vic? And we beginning interest in this? Well, there's several people that contract, the question is whether they.
Would they, yeah.
Some of them, they contract cause they can, they contract with us and 10 others and make more money, yeah.
Forty-five, fifty, fifty-five. They'd have to come for the benefits.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, cause we can't match the salary they're making independently.
That, that's a problem.
Maybe we can provide the benefits, cause they have to do their own benefits, that's a draw. Yeah, there's several people out there, WU has a program that, that their psychology department has that, a training program for this. So, there's certainly people in the Morgantown area, there's not so many down here, but the, both of these guys are coming from Morgantown.
Yeah.
The ones we just contracted with, so that's where they are and hopefully they can try.
And maybe it wouldn't hurt, you know, continue this, but, uh, go ahead and put a position on there and advertise for it and see what you get.
See what happens, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us down to out of state professional leave requests and out of state travel study requests, is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Messenger has made the motion to approve and Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? I have a little bit of question, uh, I, for the conferences that are in New Orleans, why the difference in, in funding, if they're, if they're staying the same, they're going down and staying the same, uh, the same timeframe, the 7th to the 10th, um, it looks like.
I think one of the individuals going, um, was going to drive, and if you drive, it's capped off.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the way that the applications come through is Lola Brown does a standard application, um, that they all fill out. And if it's less than that maximum that Lola puts in, that's why you have some that are less.
Okay.
And these are estimates, they're not.
Right, yeah, I just was curious, because you had, everywhere from 395 dollars to 2,000 dollars.
Yeah.
So, I just was curious as to why.
But I think the max would, the, the.
The max is the 2,000.
The max, anything below that would be probably their driving, man, driving in New Orleans.
You have one individual that wants to drive.
Really?
I can tell it's.
In July.
That's answer.
Yeah.
Really?
He wants to drive.
Drove to Vegas a couple of times, I'd do it.
Okay, those are the only questions that I had. If there are no further discussion points, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Bus driver promissory note. Is there a motion to approve the bus driver promissory note for Rodney Cooper?
So moved.
Mr. Hamrick has made the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Messenger has seconded the motion, is there any discussion?
I, I would just say, along with this, Jimmy's not here, but from where, where we are compared to two or three years ago, bus drivers is modern day. So, it's exactly what, what needed to be done, so we don't have the issues and we were worried, there are a few times of having enough people to drive, so whatever you're doing, keep it up.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Somebody remind me what, what special meetings we wanted to call?
Uh, for the.
Contract?
New evaluation process.
Yes, oh, the new evaluation process, yes, so.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, if you want, if you wanna do that, if not, we could stick it with something else.
We, well, I, I figure it would be good for us to get together to ta, kind of talk about what things we, if we're gonna, we gotta do it before July 1st, we have to submit the evaluation process before July 1st. So, if they're, we're gonna do a special meeting, um, let's say.
Special course?
Uh, what do we got in March?
What, what do we have?
We got a lot in March.
Twenty-third, we have, March.
Oh, we have the 24th and the 23rd.
On the 23rd, uh, of March, wait a minute.
Should we push it to April?
Okay, wait a second.
Can we come before the regular board meeting, say, we, well, how long to take an hour?
I'd say maybe half an hour to an hour to look over it and kind of.
And how about we do it prior to the regular board meeting?
That's not a bad idea.
Uh, on the 23rd?
More April.
April.
April 7th, oh, April 7th, yeah, we could do it then, cause we don't have any other meetings but one.
Okay, so let's, let's look at, do it, uh, 5 o'clock at April 3rd. And then what I would, April 7th?
Yes.
And then what I would suggest is everybody come with a couple ideas that they want for the, for the, um, evaluation.
Um, March 24th, what is, I'm trying to look.
It's Frank Lorre, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Frank Lorre is.
Twenty-third, we have a meeting.
Twenty-third, we have a meeting.
So, Monday.
Okay.
Frank Lorre banquet is on Tuesday.
On, um, um, okay, but I had, I don't know why I had the 24th as our meeting.
Originally was.
Originally was.
Changed it.
Okay, that's good, cause I'll be in LA. Wouldn't be here.
On the 24th.
I'm, I'm going to Family Feud, so I, I gotta go fly now.
Will you be at the meeting?
I will be at the 23rd and meet a guest, 24th I fly out.
All right, excellent.
Is Steve Harvey home?
Good old Steve Harvey.
So, what, what date did we just decide on, though, something like them?
April 7th.
That's Tuesday.
At 5 o'clock, we have a regular meeting at 6 o'clock. So, we'll meet at 5 and have a, uh, discussion about the supervisory or the superintendent's evaluation tool.
At 5.
Yes.
Yeah, cause this one up here is 6,000, too, I have to move.
I know, that, that, yeah.
I'm in the wrong business.
Okay, so, um, if there's nothing further, then I will entertain a, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hamrick has seconded the motion, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Children of peace, go in peace.
Adjourned. Thank you.